2021 Board of Supervisors meeting at this time, I would like to ask everyone present to either turn off or mute your phones during the meeting. If it goes off, you're going to have to buy lunch for everyone. It could get expensive. And so with that, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. And Mr. Hayes, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. And so I'm going to go ahead and remove my mask while we do this. And I know that CDC has recommended that if we are indoors that we wear masks. It's for everybody's protection, but it's just a recommendation. So we'll... Okay. So at this time, I will go to Call to the Public, and I know Mr. Jacobson had wanted to speak under Call to the Public. So if you unmute yourself, sir, please go ahead. You've got three minutes from now. So can you hear me, Mr. Jacobson?
I can. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead. Your three minutes is starting, sir.
Thank you so much. So I have three minutes and three items. These three items should have been on the agenda for the supervisors because they're so important and they're so timely. The first of the items is the EDA Build Back Better appropriation, which is now under consideration by the Commerce Department and the Economic Development Administration specifically. The first meeting was held this week online for discussion amongst the various parties. The amount of money that they're talking about is $3 billion. And I didn't see any presence from anyone in Southern Arizona, frankly, but certainly not from the county, which is a major loss. We should be there for the next meeting, and we should be there right now lobbying with our representatives in wherever they're located at the moment to talk about how we can get our hands on some of that $3 billion. The second thing I wanted to talk about very briefly was the extreme fire danger that we're facing, particularly in the outer bounds, not so much in Nogales, but the rest of the county. We've had intense rain, and now we're going to go into a predicted 90 days of extreme drought. I know that in our neighborhood, which is located in the hills around Patagonia, I don't know that there are plans sufficient in place that could actually deal with that. And we have no, as far as I know, no plans in place to deal with mitigating the fire danger as it exists currently. So there'll be a huge liability here that somebody is going to assume if a fire does break out because it'll be on the Sinoida fire proportions. The third thing I wanted to bring up was the possibility of a public nuisance suit that has to do with the running of heavy trucks on county roads. People think I'm talking about specifically my neighborhood. I'm not. My wife was out driving and reported that there are heavy trucks, apparently mining trucks, but wherever they come from is kind of irrelevant, that are driving on county roads in the vicinity of Horseshot, but also down toward Lake Hill, that are driving at 50, 55, 60, 65 miles per hour. She actually had to dodge one of these heavy trucks. Nobody seems to know where they're from or who's in charge of monitoring their operations and the things that might happen as a result of that. A lot of these issues are really important. I haven't got more time to talk to all of them. I was going to suggest that since the county is lightly staffed and because the county supervisors have so much on their plates, you might want to consider appointing citizen committees of potential... We have a lot of experts in our town, but they're experts everywhere, and ask some of us to be your partners in dealing with these critical issues. I hope these critical issues will not be ignored between now and the next county supervisors' meeting. That would be a large mistake with large possible liabilities for both the county and the people living here.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else on the phone wishing to address the board? On the phone, going once, going twice. Okay. So we'll move to the Call to the Public here. First slip I have is John Hayes. Mr. Hayes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Hayes from the Public Works Department. I just wanted to update the board on the move that we're making to... To help divest ourselves from some additional surplus equipment at the probation offices so we can open up some of the offices for use and for other storage. And so we're looking at using the same auction services by Sierra Auction that Pima County uses. And hopefully here in the next month or so, we'll be able to open up some of those offices for use. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Next one is Ivan... Is it Dreschler?
Dreschler.
Dreschler, please, sir. And three minutes, sir.
My name is Ivan Dreschler, and I'm... My address is P.O. Box 4245, Tubac, Arizona, 85646. And I am president of the Tubac Chamber of Commerce. My subject is the role that the Tubac Chamber has played throughout the years. A, in association with the Arizona Office of Tourism, prior to the recession, we received grants and funding that fully supported our efforts to market the village. The AOT in 206, 207 required that access to the regional co-op program would require a C6 designation, eliminating the ability to act as a political body. Since then, the Chamber has been fully focused on marketing the Tubac-Tumaco area, essentially being the destination marketing organization, plus taking care of the restaurants. And that the AOT now has again changed the rules for access to their 50/50 marketing rural program, requiring the affidavit and certification. Also, the recent grant and tourism fund Governor Ducey has announced, the $100 million in funding directly for tourism now also requires the DMO status as well, so it becomes doubly important. The issue, when they first announced this funding, was going to allow Chamber of Commerce to apply as a separate entity. But now they've changed it again, and now it's requiring that we have the designation of the destination marketing organization. We've been acting as it, so we desperately need your vote to approve this. We have limited funding anyway. What occurs is that we have filled out the sheets, we've done the applications, and we've decided on some minor marketing that we can do, which would take about $5,900 of our funds. That would take them... And that would equate to about an $11,000 gain in actual marketing for us. And then if we can get into the line of this $100 million play, which allows for festivals and other larger-scale events coming down the road in the next year and a half, two years. So it's something that we desperately need for our marketing, and we hope that, obviously, the spillover of the tourism taxes, the TPT, rather, will benefit the county as well. And then on one other subject, I really think that I would suggest that we have something on a county basis to develop and enhance the tourism of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else under Call to the Public? Okay. Seeing none, then we will go on to Item G, and that is Current Events. Board of Supervisors, Vice Chairman Bracker.
Good morning, Chairman Reese. I'd like to thank the Public Works Department. They really got after it these last two weeks with that storm. There were lots of roads that were washed out and had dirt all over them and rocks. And so they worked pretty much through the night and all day long and kept everything open as best as they could. So thank you very much for doing that. I know our constituents really appreciate that. Also had an opportunity to attend a very rainy back-to-school event in District 35. Supervisor Malera joined me. Thank you very much. That was fun. But we had about 800 notebooks to give away to the kids, and I thought it went really, really well. We weren't boiling out there. We had our rain jackets. So... And that's what I have to report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Supervisor Malera.
Mr. Chairman, good morning.
Good morning.
I too want to thank Cessous' staff for doing an amazing job with our streets. And we've been... In July, it was just an enormous amount of rain, and I think this guy's handled it great. Thank you. Back-to-school blitz, Bruce, that was actually entertaining because it didn't stop raining, but we had a tent and we had an umbrella. So we made it happen, and people were there, and then people were in line, in cars. And it was a wonderful event. I also attended a very nice event that is one of our favorites every year at the Santa Cruz Valley, District 35, a welcome-back celebration. It's a fun event, and it's good to see them motivating their teachers, their staff, everyone involved in that district. I wish them luck this year, and I hope the kids stay safe. And like I told them, we have one more wave to ride. Our kids are... It's real critical that they maintain safe, especially the kids that haven't been vaccinated. And lastly, I had the honor of attending... I think our chairman was there as well, and so was Jennifer at the Teacher of the Year. Alfredo, our school superintendent's office and staff do an amazing job, along with the Rotary, and it's a wonderful event to attend in Tubac. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Malera. I have no report, but I did skip the addition of the agenda. So we'll just go back to Item B. Madam Chair, any changes on the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. So Chair'll entertain a motion then to adopt the agenda and deviate as necessary.
So moved.
Second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and since Call to the Public and current event are not action items, I don't think we're in violation of our agenda. So now that we're going into the part with set, go ahead.
And let me remind you, we have a free lunch coming.
Oh, yeah. Well, Ms. Cervantes very conveniently walked out the back, so as soon as she comes in, we'll make sure... We'll make sure she doesn't leave, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I did. I saw that. Okay. We'll go on then to Item E, Department Reports and Activities. What's... What... Can I buzz with Jennifer?
Me first.
Current events, Madam Manager.
Oh, I forgot you.
I have a big list, too.
Yeah, I know. I know. I apologize. Oh, good. There's Ms. Cervantes, so she's buying lunch for everyone. We'll go ahead and start taking orders here and make sure she pays for it, so... Madam Manager, I apologize.
No worries. Thank you so much.
One of those days, I think.
Good morning, everyone. Over the last two weeks, we have continued our meetings with the city regarding the IOI and the Nogales wash. And we have also had meetings with ADEQ and ADA regarding the Fisher operation out in Río Rico. We met with District 35 to continue to explore the possibilities of different partnerships with that school district. We met with the schools and Mariposa, along with the Health Department, to discuss back-to-school vaccinations. As you all know, we adopted the budget and tax rates last week. As Supervisor Malera mentioned, we did a welcome-back at District 35, which is an exciting event every year. I also attended Teacher of the Year. Mark Ditmer from District 35 won that event, and we got word yesterday that he's a finalist at the state level. So that's pretty exciting news for our community. And I want to thank Supervisor Bracker and Supervisor Malera for attending the District 35 back-to-school. It was very rainy. I could not attend. I had other meetings, but we really appreciate you handing out the notebooks on behalf of our students. So thank you so much. We also did a donation to NUSD as well. They were not having an in-person one, but they were handing out backpacks. So we took care of both those districts. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Now we'll go on to Item E, Department Reports and Activities, Finance, Cash, Investment, Expenditure, and Revenue Report. Mr. Chavez, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The Cash and Investment Report, the general fund has an overall balance of $13,338,630, with an investment amount of just a little bit over $10 million. The Road Fund has an overall balance of $1,998,471, with an investment amount of $815,000. The Flood Control District Fund has an overall balance of $2,566,338, with an investment amount of $1,800,000. The Jail District Fund has an overall balance of $1,457,471, with just a little bit over $1 million investments. Total for all funds, $36,265,598, with an investment amount of $15,778,000. Estimated end-of-the-month balance of $9,954,645.
Gentlemen, any questions of Mr. Chavez?
No, sir.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mauricio. This time, Chair'll entertain a motion to recess and convene into the Flood Control District.
So moved.
There's a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are now convening to the Flood Control District.
Thank you.
Mr. Hayes, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We'll do the Director's Report first.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I do have a couple of addendums to the report to make for you today. Item number one, I just handed out the final totals for precipitation within the county through our alert system. At the low end, we had 4.29 inches down at the crossing of Santa Cruz River by State Route 82, which is pretty close to normal for rainfall for July, to a high of 15.08 inches at Penya Blanca Lake, with an average of a little over eight inches throughout the county for the month of July. Please keep in mind, 11 inches is normal for the monsoons. So we're on track to potentially match or exceed what we saw back in 2017, where we had a number of gauges that went over 20 inches for the monsoon.
Well, let's hope that that'll happen.
Well, not all at once, hopefully.
No.
Item number two, just an update on that. The Cultural Historic Survey was completed on Monday for the grant application. I did not hear back from the team. They said they would call if they found anything. They didn't call, so the assumption is they didn't find anything, which was what they expected based on a previous report that had been done for the Mariposa Port of Entry about 15 years ago. Item number four, just a reminder that the letter of map revision for the Aguafre wash at the crossing of the West Frontage Road down into the Circle of Mercado area is to go into effect on August 25th. So that mapping will be changing that morning. Item number six, we ended the month with 304 requests for floodplain status, 11 from the town of Patagonia, and 31 from the city of Nogales. And then item number nine, we ended the month with four drainage complaints, one of which was from the city of Nogales.
Great. Any questions or comments on...
I'd like to see if I can get a copy of that new mapping.
Yes, sir. Should be no problem.
Online, it doesn't have to be physical, but I'd like to see how many people are... What the changes are.
Sure thing.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So the historical report, that's for the Ephraim Canyon, right?
Yes, sir.
And since you haven't heard anything, let's keep our fingers crossed there's nothing there. That will go, and hopefully we'll have some kind of news.
Yes, sir. My understanding is that we're supposed to be hopefully hearing sometime by the end of September, beginning of November, right around the federal fiscal year.
Great, because that really will help stem a lot of the issues along Western Avenue. So I hope as we can get that and get that built and done, it'll really save a lot of hard work from not just our staff, the city staff, but the people that are living there along Western Avenue and along that wash and stuff.
I would hope so because I've seen indications that this thing's been talked about since at least 1912, so...
Okay. Well, we're making progress, I guess, a century and plus later, so it's not too bad. Do you have something to add, Supervisor Malera?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, then. Did we have any reports from the city of Nogales?
Did not receive a report from the city of Nogales.
The town of Patagonia?
I did not receive a report from the town of Patagonia, though the town manager does appear to be on the Zoom meeting if he...
Does the town of Patagonia have anything to report in the Flood Control District? Apparently not. Great. That's good news.
No, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Thank you, Ron. And then public comments. Just, I know that wash right there by Leva Bridge, I guess this last event really put the sediment up high, so I don't know if there's any plans to do that. I think that's kind of led through the water coming out of there. And I know that bridge was built not very well, but it did create, and you could see where the gravel and sand and the rocks just kind of came up a little, so maybe there's a way to do something there. Anyone under public comment for the Flood Control District? Seeing no one rushing to there, Chair'll entertain a motion to adjourn our Flood Control District and reconvene regular... No, and go into the Jail District.
So moved.
There's a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Our Flood Control District is adjourned, and we are now convening to the Jail District. Item one, discussion, possible action for authorization to fill: two vacant detention corporal positions, three vacant detention officer's position, and see a vacant booking clerk positions. All are budgeted for, Madam Manager?
Yes, sir.
Great. Chair'll entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and those positions are authorized to be filled. Item two, discussion, possible action to approve pharmacy service agreement with Correct RX for medication services at the county jail. Everything in order there, Kim?
Yes.
Move to approve.
There's a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and so ordered. I'll entertain a motion to... We'll do the executive session at the end of this, if you don't mind, Jennifer. So at this time, Chair'll entertain a motion to adjourn our Jail District and convene into regular session.
So moved.
There's a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We will go to action items. One, discussion, possible action for authorization to fill senior court clerk position for the Justice of the Peace. Everything in order?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve.
There's a second.
A second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in...
Madam Manager, that is also a budgeted position?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item two, discussion, possible action to accept the Adult Education Services Program Award for Fiscal Year 2022 from the State of Arizona Department of Education in the amount of $250,000. Of course, Mauricio, you can't take any cash from here to buy us lunch. Has to come out of your pocket, so... Everything in order? Great. Chair'll entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Go ahead.
Those don't require any matching funds, right? That's just operating costs.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, those require a matching fund, but it's indirect in kind, and we have that already accomplished.
Great. Good.
There's no cash match, though.
Thank you.
Great. So there's a motion, second. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item three, discussion, possible action to approve service agreement and contract addendum number one with Motorola Solutions, Inc., for the sheriff's office radio system maintenance in the amount of $135,286.34. Everything in order? Two, Madam Manager? Good. Chair'll entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Item four, discussion, possible action to approve an open-end lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management for four vehicle leases for the Sheriff's Department and four for the General Fund, and authorize the Administrative Services Director to sign documents. So as we... It's a lease purchase, right? Or is it just leasing?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it is. It is just a lease. At the end of the lease, there's a nominal amount there that can go... The county chooses to purchase a vehicle. We have that option to do that. We went ahead and put all the vehicles that we budgeted for, because as you know, the automobile industry is having a lot of issues with microchips. And the vehicles that we... If you decide to approve them today, we are able to order them the following week with General Motors, and we won't probably receive them until... Speculating until probably the end of March or April.
No, it's not a problem. I just... I know that we've had to do that before instead of buying them just outright. So along with the lease purchase, that includes maintenance and everything else that goes with it, or is that separate?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it includes maintenance for the four vehicles for the General Fund. It does not include maintenance for the sheriff vehicles. Those do not apply, as Enterprise does not offer that in those vehicles.
Okay, so that comes on our dime, then?
Yes, sir.
Or the sheriff's budget?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Not a problem. Gentlemen, any questions?
No, sir.
Chair'll entertain a motion then to approve?
Move to approve.
There's a second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. Okay. Hopefully we'll get them sometime before next year. Item five, discussion, possible action to approve intergovernmental agreement between Pinal County, Santa Cruz County, and the Superior Court of the State of Arizona, and and for the counties of Santa Cruz and Pinal for juvenile detention services. Madam Manager?
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have this IGA before you because we're at low staffing levels on our juvenile detention side, and so staff just thought it would be a good idea to have something in place should we unexpectedly lose a juvenile detention officer or, you know, somebody has to go out for workers' comp or something like that. So this is just an agreement in place in case we fall below our staffing levels that provides a safe environment for our juveniles.
Great. And for our staff as well, so...
That's correct.
Good. Okay. Chair'll entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item six, discussion, possible action to approve cooperative purchasing agreement with Pima County to allow both counties to purchase material and services used in competitively awarded contracts by either party, and allow the county manager to sign the agreement. Madam Manager?
This is an agreement just that allows us to piggyback off Pima County's RFPs. I mean, they could piggyback off ours as well, but they're a much bigger entity, and so they, generally speaking, have bid those services out, and it saves staff a time because the bidding... The procurement's already been done.
Great. Good. Good idea. Chair'll entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item seven, designation, possible action to adopt and approve Resolution Number 2021-10, Designating the Tubac Chamber of Commerce as a destination marketing organization for the Tubac area from July 2021 through July 31st, 2022. That's from the clerk. Madam Manager?
Mr. Chairman, as you heard Mr. Dreschler address you all earlier today, this designation is now needed for a Tubac... Or I'm sorry, a Department of Commerce grant. As an unincorporated county, we can designate different agencies for different areas of our county. So the Tubac Chamber is asking to be designated for the Tubac area. If you're in an incorporated area, such as the city of Nogales or town of Patagonia, that entity would need to designate you for those incorporated areas. I do know we have one other chamber that reached out to us, but we can designate them for an unorgani-- an unincorporated area of our community in addition to Tubac Chamber.
Perfect. Yeah, and look, I mean, you know, I will tell you this, and no disrespect to the Tubac Chamber, I have a very good working relationship with the Santa Cruz County Chamber of Commerce, do a lot of things together. But having heard what you've said, I mean, there's no reason why you can't have for certain areas that are not within the city, but, you know, I would also encourage the city of Nogales to designate the chamber as the destination. What is it? The marketing, the destination marketing organization. I think it's important. If we have two, that's even better for us and the region, so, you know, like I said, I have no issue with it, but I would also like to see maybe if we can work something through the local chamber as well in Santa Cruz County. Comments, gentlemen?
I want, first of all, I want to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I want to move to approve.
Now a second. Okay, discussion?
And under discussion, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. I think the more, the merrier, and it's good economic development for our county. I commend Tubac. I know it only includes that area, but I think at one point or another, I do agree we need to include all other areas.
Absolutely.
Those are my comments.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Brecker, anything to add?
I do. I'd like to thank the Tubac Chamber of Commerce for all the work that they're doing and staying on top of all these things. There's so many rule changes and different documents and different grants that are coming out, and it's a full-time job almost to stay on top of that. So Ivan and Tubac Chairman, President of the Tubac Chamber, thank you very much for all the work that you're doing in this to support our community.
Great. So if there's no further discussions or comments, Chair will go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and the resolution is adopted. Item eight, discussion, possible action to approve bond for duplicate warrant number two dash zero nine nine eight one six in the amount of $47,727-- excuse me, $47,727.8 dated seven six 2021 payable to TNT Maintenance. How can you lose a check that big? Huh?
Business must be good.
I guess, who knows? Chair entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
There a second? Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We will now go to tax valuation adjustments A through P. Chair entertain a motion?
Move to approve, Mr. Chair. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion, comments, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We will go on to item 10, approval of minutes of seven twenty twenty one, seven twenty seven twenty twenty one. Chair will entertain a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 11, amended, four twenty one twenty twenty, minutes approved on five nineteen twenty twenty. Was there some corrections made there?
Yes, sir, there was a correction to the flood district.
Great, okay. Chair entertain a motion?
Move to approve. Now a second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the amended minutes are approved and adopted. Item 12, demand Supervisor Malera?
Mr. Chair, move to approve demands totaling $418,496.91, of which $259,064.44 are from the general fund.
There a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We can pay our bills. And now, we will go to item G, executive session pursuant to IRS 38431, oh three A one, discussion and evaluation of work performance of county manager Jennifer St. John. Chair entertain a motion to convene into executive session, unless, of course, the manager wants to have it in the open, but that's her prerogative. So, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Will now recess and convene into executive session. Where do you want to meet, Jennifer? We clear? Okay. So let's, it's okay. I mean, so at this time, I will go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn our executive session and reconvene regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are now reconvening to a regular session. At this time, I will go ahead and recess this meeting till 2:00 PM for our study session. Okay, so at this time, I will call our meeting back to order, and we will be under item J, study session, presentation on the assessment, excuse me, I put my glasses on, on the assessment of hydrological risk and concerns related to the Hermosa Mine Project presented by Lasher Hydrologic Consulting and Integrated Hydro Systems LLC. So Jennifer, if you will go ahead and we'll get started.
Okay, good afternoon, thank you. At this time, Carolyn Schaefer should be on the phone. She's just going to introduce the consultants and turn it over to the consultants.
Thank you, Jennifer. Greetings to Chairman Liz, Supervisors Brecker and Malera, and to County Manager St. John, and to the general public attending today. My name is Carolyn Schaefer, and I have lived in Patagonia for about 25 years. I owned and operated a retail business in Patagonia for 14 years. I am here today as a board member of Patagonia Area Resource Alliance, also known as Power Watch Dogs, an organization of citizens working to protect the water and wildlife of the unique biologically diverse ecosystem known as the Patagonia Mountains and the Sonoyta Creek watershed, which is a major tributary of the Santa Cruz River watershed. Thank you for coming together today to hear from Power Watch Dogs hydrology expert about concerns about South 32's proposed de-watering in the Patagonia Mountains, and the greater concerns about the company's long-term plans. As Benjamin Franklin said, "When the wells dry, we know the worth of water." Water is life, and we are living during an unfolding climate change reality. Protecting the natural resource of water must be our collective first priority. Laurel Locker is a highly respected hydrologist specializing in groundwater modeling to support base flows in desert streams, water resources investigation, and water supply development for government entities. Laurel's areas of expertise include groundwater modeling, drought analysis, surface water modeling, water supply well design and development, aquifer testing, and natural resources and water utility policy development. It is truly my honor to present Laurel Locker to share with you today this very important information. Thank you.
So Ms. Locker, welcome. You've got about 20 minutes for your presentation, and then we'll do about 10 minutes of questions and answers, so please proceed.
Well, thank you very much, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here, and I will say that this presentation is intended to last longer than 20 minutes, so I will skip through a few slides, but you have them in your handout, and we could perhaps cover any questions you have at the end.
Great, thank you. Please proceed.
With that, I hear some feedback. I'm not sure what is causing that.
We'll just go ahead and mute ourselves, and then after the presentation, we'll unmute. So go ahead, please.
Okay, all right. I'll just introduce the title of my talk is Assessment of Hydrologic Risks and Concerns Related to the Hermosa Mine Project. My colleague Bob Pruka is not here today, but he was instrumental in this work as well. I'm just going to start with a, sure, there we go. Start with a little basic location information here. I'm assuming that most of you are familiar with the location of the Hermosa project. This is the South 32 Mine Company project in the Patagonia Mountains, just about five miles south of the town of Patagonia. And you can see here the outline of Harshaw Creek, which is a subject that we'll be covering in great detail today. Their planned action is de-watering of the Hermosa project area. So basically, they're going to be extracting a lot of groundwater from this area to facilitate the mineral extraction activities, and those mineral deposits include the Taylor deposit, which is a zinc, lead, and silver deposit, and the Clark deposit, which includes zinc, manganese, and silver resources. Their action includes, proposed action includes initial de-watering of the mine site up to 4,500 gallons per minute, GPM, and that water would be treated onsite and then released into Harshaw Creek. Here's just a little graphic showing the outline of the mine site, and you can see right here the center of the mine site, and then you can see Outfall One here and Outfall Two here. These are the points where water would leave the mine site and flow downstream into Allen Gulch to the north and Harshaw Creek, to the east and then north. So we have de-watering and then discharge of treated water to the creeks, and then the question is mine closure, what happens when mining is all done? There are a lot of questions here, and I'll just quickly run through a few, but the first one that we really need to know, what is the predicted life of the mine? We don't really understand that. It could be 30 years, it could be 50, 100 years, and right now, the planning horizon seems to be 30 years. We're very interested in the predict impact of any mine de-watering, so what is the pumping, the effect of pumping at the mine site going to do to other areas, and what about post-mine recovery when groundwater levels start to recover? So how far out would that reach? How would that change groundwater levels in the shallower aquifers near the surface? How would it affect spring and stream flows? How much of Harshaw Creek itself might be captured by that mining? Will springs dry up? How will de-watering, pumping, and Harshaw Creek affect Sonoyta Creek? How will mine discharge to Harshaw Creek exacerbate downstream flooding or damage infrastructure like basements and shallow wells and septic systems downstream? And what happens when high discharge in Harshaw Creek stops? So when the mine stops de-watering and moves to a smaller discharge, how will that affect resources, especially those threatened and endangered species that may come to depend on that water, as well as riparian vegetation that may have developed as a result of that higher flow? And then what would climate change impacts do to all of this? Water quality is a main concern here. We're really interested in if treated mine discharge water would change or reduce the quality of water downstream. We have potential threats to downstream wells and human health, and people who drink out of those wells. Also impacts the surface water, the threatened and endangered species and human health. And then, what about consideration for downstream contaminants that are already in Harshaw Creek as a result of natural geologic formations and perhaps legacy mining? We want to know if the treatment plants that South 32 intends to build, they have one, they would build a second one for Harshaw Creek discharge, would that be adequate to handle shifts in water quality that come in as a result of long-term de-watering and from water intercepted from old mines that already have contaminants known to exist? And how will that discharge vary over time? And if there's an accidental release, which is the main purpose of the aquifer protection permit applied for by the mine, how would South 32 protect downstream drinking water aquifers and surface waters? There are monitoring wells and early warning systems that could help with this. We feel that the proposed monitoring and early warning systems are wholly inadequate at this time. How would South 32 deal with rising water levels and mobilizing contaminants from deep underground as the groundwater recovers after mining is done? And how would that impact shallow and surface water, shallow groundwater and surface water? Again, this accidental release and contaminant transport downstream is a major focus. Let's just talk a little bit about mine de-watering. This is a document released by the parent company of South 32, Arizona Mining, Inc., and they discuss 72-hour pumping at a certain rate of 1,100 gallons per minute, and they talk about the, suggesting that the small degree of drawdown, that means how much the water level changed when they pumped groundwater at a very high rate. It suggests that the bedrock aquifer is extensive and contains a significant amount of groundwater. So that's pretty good. If you need water, it's also important to know that it may mean that there is a lot more pumping that has to be done to de-water the mine works than the 4,500 gallons that they're anticipating. So we have the question of, how much really, how much groundwater would actually need to be pumped out for the operation of this mine? And then how will that pumping affect natural systems? They did some aquifer tests. I'm going to go through this very quickly. It's not terribly germane to some of the main points, but aquifer tests are done and have been done by South 32 to understand the nature of the groundwater system and really understand how much water they can produce over the long term and how much they will need to produce, and what the quality of that water will be. This is just an example of a 15-day pump test they did at that WW1 well, and it's very complex, and an experienced hydrogeologist who conducted this test and understands all of the, everything that happened during the test could provide some very important interpretation and inform the rest of us about what they've learned from this test and other tests. We do need much more testing. It needs to be over a longer period than just 15 days because we're talking about impacts that are going to last decades. And so we need some simulations, some modeling to know what's going to happen over the life of the mine, plus the post-mine decades afterwards, so years and years of groundwater recovery after the mine is gone. This is the groundwater model that South 32 has produced, and it's a little hard to interpret the location here. I'll show you more later, but this is the Hermosa project here, and this is Sonoyta Creek, and their model does show, these are equipotential lines of groundwater here. It shows that water, groundwater migrates from the high country, the mountains down towards Sonoyta Creek, and it also migrates kind of along the Harshaw Creek toward the Sonoyta Creek area of Patagonia. This model has its boundary right along Sonoyta Creek, so it can't talk anything about what's actually happening in Sonoyta Creek. Doesn't really analyze any impacts to streams or spring, and it does include this small area of San Rafael Valley, which raises questions about why this is not actually in the same groundwater shed. So there are questions that we have about their model. These are the preliminary results. They've only shown preliminary impact simulations so far. Here's the mine site, and they show an area of intense drawdown sort of right around the mine site, lesser drawdown farther out, and then an area of groundwater rise up to 20 feet in this area that extends three miles out across Harshaw Creek, where water that is discharged from the mine into Harshaw Creek would cause groundwater to rise, and then there's no modeling of what happens after this. And frankly, we don't believe that impacts stop right at the boundary of their model. We believe that there are important things happening downstream of that. So we assume that these results are preliminary, and perhaps before they conducted some of those important aquifer tests. We'd like to see some updates and learn what they've found in their long-term projections and what they learned from their aquifer tests. Do they have a better handle on-- Do they have a better handle on the way groundwater will flow through these rock systems? We know there are many, many faults in this area. And you can see all of these red lines and red dashed lines are false. There's one in particular that is of concern here. This is the Santa Rita Harshaw Creek Fault. And it has been shown, at least in one study, to be a conduit. And abstractoso in 2020, in his thesis, he concluded that... His isotopes that he showed that major map faults within the mountain block, including the Harshaw Creek fault, appear to be conduits of groundwater movement. So even though there are some faults that are barriers, you know, some faults convey water, and this adds to the question of how would groundwater pumping at the mine site might affect water resource farther away, including in Sonoyta Creek? In general, there are several environmental concerns of mines, water resources, plants. I mentioned threatened and endangered species, also riparian habitats, meaning the plants, the flora, the fauna that depend on the stream flow. And then recreational waters. And where there's water, there are people in Arizona. And so we can expect that any new flow in Harshaw Creek will draw people's attention and probably create new recreational opportunities, which is important, makes water quality quite important. This is a map showing critical habitat and important bird areas. The mine site is right here. This is the outline of the Hermosa project. And you can see it's completely covered all the way to Harshaw Creek and almost to Patagonia for the important birdings. The light green stippling, which is all over the place here, is critical habitat, Floebild Cuckoo extends all through the mining area across Harshaw Creek. Same with the Jhar and Mexican spotted owl. So it's a very, very important ecological area. And what happens to existing springs and streams and water quality is very important when we consider the impacts to the natural system. Some major outstanding questions about the mine's de-watering program. What is the extent of formation, meaning the aquifer, that's going to be de-watered? We don't know exactly from what depth the de-watering will occur, but we want to understand how far out this formation, it's believed to be a limestone in part and some other formations. How far out does it extend? Is it going to be miles and miles? Or is it going to be very localized? What's the evidence that just four years of discharge at 4,500 gallons a minute will actually be enough to de-water the mine working? What are simulated impacts to groundwater springs and streams of long-term, meaning multi-decadal, mine de-watering? And then, you know, presumably going to a lower pumping rate at 650? We don't know what that lower rate would be. What's the uncertainty in their simulated projection? And how will climate change affect those future conditions? If we just look at mine discharge to Harshaw Creek and Alum Gulch, we've talked about the risks of contamination moving downstream from the mine site to the town, for example, rising groundwater level where Harshaw Creek begins to flow every day instead of just occasionally. And what's the potential increased risk of flooding downstream? This is a table just showing the monitoring requirements for Outfalls 1 and 2. So these are the places where water is treated at the mine site and then released to the environment. This is a monitoring requirement from the proposed APP, Aquifer Protection Permit, DEQ. This is for the point of compliance well, the only point of compliance well that exists today, and it's actually proposed. This is on Alum Gulch only. There is no monitoring well in Harshaw Creek at all. And so you can see that all of these parameters would be monitored three months... Every three months for the surface water discharges and every six months for the only monitoring well that exists. And all of these that have dark orange exceed EPA secondary maximum contaminant limits. And all that show bright yellow exceed the primary contaminant limit for EPA federal standards. Even some of Arizona's own water quality standards violate EPA primary contaminant levels. In particular, we're concerned with sulfate. There is no primary contaminant level for EPA. It's not regulated per se, but a 250 milligram per liter concentration is enough to degrade water quality. And there are several other mines in Southern Arizona that are currently under consent decrees with the state of Arizona, and they are having to mitigate sulfate at a concentration limit of 250 milligrams per liter. You can see here that there is no requirement to even report a quantified number here. They report it, but there's no limit to what they can discharge. There is a question of flooding risk downstream. The town of Patagonia and AMI, the parent company of South 32, contracted Clear Creek and Associates to study this problem. They used three separate models to study very narrow question of what happens if you take that 4,500 gallons per minute or 10 cubic feet per second of flow from the mine and you just put it right at the mouth of Harshaw Creek for five years and see what happens to flooding in the town. So here are the three models. We had a groundwater model that was really focused. You can see it did not go to the mine site at all. It just focused on this area of the town of Patagonia and upstream on the main stem of Sonoyta Creek. This is Harshaw Creek. They discharged water basically right here and set to see what would happen in terms of groundwater level changes and surface water flows downstream. They had a hydrologic model that estimated runoff from different storm events in the upstream watershed. They had a hydraulic model that routed that surface flow through the town and predicted areas of increased water level, surface water level. They predicted discharges here in Harshaw and Red Rock Creek and Sonoyta Creek at two-year, 10-year, and 50-year. These are calculated peak discharges. There was no calibration attempted here. There are no stream gauges here. They also did not consider any condition changes in Harshaw and Sonoyta Creek due to that continuous four-plus years of sustained discharge from the mine. So once you wet up Harshaw Creek, its flow conditions change. It will reject infiltrating water and make water flow more easily downstream. That is not part of this simulation. And calibration, there is some older historic data on Sonoyta Creek downstream of Patagonia that could be used to evaluate the values that they predicted here, but that was not part of their study. This is the result of the groundwater modeling, where they had just a prescribed recharge coming in from the mountains here. There was no attempt to simulate that recharge other than what I showed you in the other two models. They just put the water here and applied a recharge boundary along the edges of this model, no flow in the black areas. So they're just simulating this part of Harshaw Creek near the town and looking at groundwater level changes. And what they found was that after five years of putting in 4,500 gallons a minute right here, groundwater levels rose about four and a half feet right here, and the yellow area is about two to three feet, light green is one to two feet, and this turquoise is about half foot to one foot. Notably, these red numbers are depth to water, and you can see one at least here that has a 10-foot level. Not clear when they... What year they recorded these values. Here's one that has a seven-foot level. So depending on the accuracy of their model, a two-to-three-foot change over an area that has only got seven feet to depth to water could be a significant change, especially if the model is somewhat inaccurate or if there is high volatility in this value. Take a look at some of the historic data for a couple of these wells. Pay attention to these numbers, 433 and 833. And this is Harshaw Creek coming into town. So this is where they simulated discharge into Harshaw Creek. So this is assuming that all water that comes from the mine makes it to the point. That's their assumption to be conservative. So let's look at the historic water level changes in these two wells. I'll go back again. This is 433 is downstream of town and 833 is upstream of town. And the 833 upstream of town, well, the natural... Well, natural, but historic groundwater levels have been quite volatile. Let me see, a 30-foot rise at one point over about a year, year and a half in the 1960s. What was the cause of that? It looks to be storm-related, but we don't know because there was really no effort to simulate this natural response of groundwater level to existing conditions. Same here in the well below town, there's at least 20 feet of volatility in the historic water level record here. And it's very hard to understand how a new input, the Hermosa mine input into Harshaw Creek would affect these things without understanding how these water levels respond to natural conditions. And that was not part of the Clear Creek study.
So Ms. Lacker, you're either right at 20 minutes or a little bit.
Oh, okay.
So we'll give you a couple more minutes to wrap it up and then...
Okay.
We'll open it up, please. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. I will say that we did some modeling that included the entire watershed. This is South 32's model, and our model extended across the entire watershed. It included surface water and groundwater. And let's get through here. We were able to simulate flows in the stream of Sonoyta Creek. And we simulated what would happen to those flows at the TNC, the Nature Concerns we Preserve, if we added 4,500 gallons a minute. And we showed that that water would convey through town and actually add more than 4,500 gallons a minute to stream flows once that mine water is turned on. So we want to draw attention to the fact that there are many wells in Harshaw Creek area and, of course, downstream. And even though South 32 contends that their discharge water in Harshaw won't go past Sonoyta or go into Sonoyta Creek or beyond, we contend that it does, will. And also, we need to protect this drinking water aquifer upstream. Very shallow aquifer in Harshaw Creek with drinking water. You can see the D's here. These are drinking water wells in shallow aquifer Harshaw Creek, that it would not be protected by any point of compliance as the APP is currently written. So we propose adding two points of compliance here to monitoring wells above the first drinking water aquifer. And also starting to monitor, drill, go ahead and drill this conceptual point of compliance in the APP. Make a real well and start collecting data now so that we can understand what the impacts are of that discharge from the mine through Harshaw Creek before it hits Sonoyta Creek. And we know that currently, the town of Patagonia has sulfate water levels, where we talked about how important that is, already exceeding 250 milligram per liter limit. So any additional sulfate released into Harshaw Creek could impact these levels significantly in the town of Patagonia and drive it well above that secondary maximum contaminant limit of 250. Say that this is the conceptual geologic model that South 32 has offered us. It shows deep de-watering at the 2,000-foot level, so that's 3,000 feet below ground. Their wells that they tested was 2,000 feet deep. We don't know what the future groundwater levels are going to look like. We don't really know how far out this pumping impact will be and how it will affect contamination that exists from historic mine, as well as, you know, it flows down into Sonoyta Creek. We recommend that there's a more complete model of the system, and we need a model over the lifetime of the mine as well as post-mine recovery. We'd like to do that with an integrated model that concludes surface water and groundwater. And we certainly would like to see more monitoring to protect downstream waters. So early warning system in terms of daily monitoring at the mine point of release instead of three to six months. We want to see some background data collected very soon at the mouth of Harshaw Creek so we can know what's changing over time. And then some stream gauges installed in Harshaw Creek, which I believe the Forest Service is working on now. And that is the conclusion of my talk.
Thank you, Ms. Lacker. I appreciate it. And at this time, any members of the board have any questions for Ms. Lacker?
Ms. Lacker, this information that you're giving us, was this presented to ADEQ in the request on the application for their permit?
We did submit detailed comments on both the AZIPDs and APP permits, the draft permits. And so, yes, they have seen this. They have also attended at least one... Carolyn can speak to this, but I believe they have attended at least one of my presentations to the Flood and Flow Committee or the other presentation we did, the first one. I can't remember. Yes, ADEQ has watched the presentation that Laurel and Bob did for one of the Flood and Flow Committees, and then they also received and viewed a recording of another presentation.
And then there was a combined study that South 32 did with the town of Patagonia and the Flood and Flow Committee and a couple other people. How different is this study compared to that study?
Well, so that was what I was guessing. The Clear Creek modeling study was very, very narrow. It was looking only at what happened if you put 4,500 gallons per minute basically just upstream of Sonoyta Creek and ran it through town. And so we believe that that's too narrow of a focus. It didn't address anything to do with water quality. It didn't address any long-term changes due to wetting up of Harshaw Creek. It didn't really calibrate the predicted runoff from the mountains in any way. We just felt that it was a very, very narrow study, and we have done a model that includes the entire watershed above, basically above the Santa Cruz River. And we feel that all of those systems need to be modeled together to fully understand and predict your impacts from this mine's de-watering and potential water contaminant transport. And I will emphasize again that the Clear Creek report that was done for the town of Patagonia and South 32 was a five-year look at this in addition to the other things Laurel said. And this is a project that is certainly intended to be very long-term. So a five-year understanding in addition to all of the other things that Laurel mentioned is not long enough for understanding the impact to the water of this county.
And if the town of Patagonia requested this study and they could have put whatever parameters... Why were the parameters so narrow on the study that the town of Patagonia did versus what you did? I mean, town of Patagonia could have asked for anything. Why did they...
I would defer to the town manager, who is on the conference, if he has an answer for that.
Was there guidance given by the Flood and Flow Committee that this should be the scope of the study?
No, sir. Flood and Flow Committee was not involved in the negotiations between the town and South 32 or Clear Creek.
But these were all... But this... Did ADEQ have any comments on this study? Or did they just take the information in?
I'm sorry, I could barely hear you, and I think that's Supervisor Bracker. I can barely hear you, sir.
Did ADEQ make comments on this assessment of hydraulic risks and concerns related to Hermosa Mine Project study? Or did you just submit comments?
We submitted comments, and they responded to our comments as well as everyone else's. And that... Now we have an opportunity to respond to their response to our comments. So it's a long back and forth. I think there are some things that DEQ... I think there are some things that DEQ is handling, you know, in as narrow a way as possible. And for example, you know, where state water quality regulations differ from federal regulations, they are not making any consideration for that. And another important point is that the responses that ADEQ has released at the moment are with respect to only the ESDP's permit. There has been no release of responses to the APP comments.
And wouldn't ADEQ be monitoring the sulfide content and all the other contaminant contents in the creek?
ADEQ will only monitor what is required by South 32 to report. So that's why we feel it's very important to increase that monitoring spatially and temporally. It needs to be more than three to six months. If there is a large spill at the mine site, it could be a year and a half before there's any action to remediate in any way because of the way the permit is written and the requirement to, once there is a detection, then they resample again. That could take several months. Then they talk about whether they should put in a downstream monitoring point. You know, there's just many, many steps they go through before there's any attempt to do any remediation. So we feel that that is much too dangerous for downstream drinking water wells and streams. There should be a point of compliance right at the mine site, not five or nine miles downstream as they propose. They're proposing to put all of Harsaw Creek below the mine site in their pollutant management area. They define it as their pollutant management area, which means basically anything can happen in that area and they wouldn't have to comply until the nine miles downstream just above Sonoyta Creek.
They can't hear you, Bruce. There's been something on the chat.
I didn't have any other questions.
Is that it?
Okay. I'd answered, I'd asked my questions and they've answered my questions.
Great. Thank you, Vice Chairman Brecker. Supervisor Maletta?
No, I just want to thank Dr. Lacker for her presentation. Bruce pretty much asked the questions I was going to ask, and thank you for your presentation.
Great. Carolyn and Dr. Lacker, thank you very much. And we'll, we'll take all this information into consideration. And if there are no other comments at this time, we will go ahead and adjourn our study Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
At this time, Carolyn, entertain a motion to adjourn our session.
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Meeting stands adjourned.